All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, welcome to the Bellingham zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, March 3rd, uh, 2020. Before I start the public hearing, um, the town administrator Dennis Frain had, um, some information about the town planner, planning position that he wanted to share with everyone.
Yeah, just a quick update. I know, um, I spoke with the planning board a month ago and wanted to touch base with the zoning board as well. Just to let you know that our, our search for a planner has gone full circle and we're right back, back to where we started. We, we've contracted, contracted with Jim to continue providing services to your board and to the planning board virtually. So he'll continue, uh, being a part of, of your operation. And I know I've been meeting with him regularly, virtually. Um, Amy Sutherland is going to be, or was appointed assistant planner. So she'll be working out of the office, handling the day-to-day operations and, and will be available to the board on a regular basis and providing additional support to you. And Laura Reyno, once again, will be, uh, doing the minutes. So Amy will be, will be able to focus a little bit more on the administrative part of, of everything that, that, uh, your board does. So just wanted to, to let you know where, where we are. And, um, I think the transition will be seamless.
Great. So this is a permanent position then?
This is, Amy's been a permanently appointed to the assistant planner position and, and Jim is going to continue working with us virtually as a full-time job, obviously, um, down at Barnstable. And he'll be working, um, with us, uh, providing services, obviously attending all of your meetings, um, meeting with, uh, applicants and working very closely with Amy.
Well, congratulations to both of you. Thank you.
Congrats, Amy.
Yeah, congratulations.
We got a great team here. Jim and I are a great team. We'll keep it up.
Happy to have Jim staying on as well.
Me too.
Thanks. Yeah, as long as Jim can get some sleep or get some time off. But yeah, thanks, Dennis.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, Dennis.
Thanks.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is 191 Blackstone Street. Um, let me pull up the notice.
Brian, the applicant is present. I do see them in as one of the participants.
Actually, I don't see the notice. Um, was that sent on?
We could read it.
Yeah, Amy, do you mind reading the notice?
Can I make sure to waive the reading of the notice?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. All right. So the applicant, it looks like is Zane.
Zane, yes, yes.
And you said, are you Zane Lee? Are you present?
Right there. You're muted. There you go.
I, did I, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yeah, I did. Got it.
Okay.
Three stars.
And is the, um, so yeah, I guess if you want to walk us through it. So it sounds like, I guess, after reading it, that it's already, already a pre-existing family apartment and you're looking to add an appliance. Is that correct?
Yeah. So.
There was a pre-existing in-law suite. Um, so we were just looking to reapply the permit and, you know, add the appliances that would be needed, um, upstairs for that.
Okay. So did the, so Jim, did the, I imagine then that it lapsed, the previous family apartment.
Yeah, I think it was like in the, in the nineties when they put the addition on to the house. I found an old something online that was saying that it, the house came with a mother-in-law suite.
Right. And so as, as the board knows, a family apartment, uh, permit is, is tied to the individual. So this is why they would have to reapply as, as a new family apartment.
So the previous owners were using it as a family apartment, but since the two of you have had it, it has not functioned as a family apartment.
Correct.
Okay. And then I guess, um, so I believe it said, is it, um, for a parent that's going to be staying in the family?
Yeah.
For them for the future. Is that?
Right.
Okay. Do you want to?
I guess a question, whose parent is it and the name please?
So it would be my mom. She retired recently and at this time she wants to live independently, but we wanted to get it fixed up in case she was interested in moving in with us. So we wanted to do the work like before she decided that she was ready for it.
And what is her name?
Gloria Boje. B-H-O-G-E.
That's great. And, um, yeah, I guess, can you just walk us through just in general, there's, um, so it's just to get it ready for your mother? Um, are there any other cha-, I mean, which is, you're just going to be adding an appliance? Is there any other, it's going to stay the same square footage, right? It's not anything?
Yeah, we would really just be adding appliances to one of the rooms in the, on the top floor. There's like, um, we believe, there's like a hookup. We want to, we assume there's hookups because it said there used to be an apartment. And so we just wanted to re-hook up the appliances to the top floor.
And it's over the garage? Is that correct? Is that what you were saying?
Oh, no, it's, um, our, our top floor. So there's like our, our main residence and then, um, towards the rear, uh, towards the rear of the house. And they, they added on like, uh, like a, like a family room on the bottom floor and then has a stairwell to go to a top, the second floor, which is above the main residence. And, um, so I think they must've added a second floor at some point, but it was the family prior to the family we bought it from. So it's like two thousand years ago.
And then obviously you, you would be staying in the main house. Okay. Um, and then I guess would she, your mother would be, it would just be like one vehicle that you would probably have? There wouldn't be any?
Yeah, she lives by herself now anyways.
Yeah.
I guess I don't, yeah, I don't have any other questions. I'll just open it to the board.
Brian, can I ask one question? If you don't mind. Um, so as we sit here today, this moment, there's no imminent plan for your mom to move in.
That's true.
Immediately.
Right.
Okay.
We just know everything takes time. I mean, like, didn't want her to decide she needed to have more, lessen the, she's like, add, she wants to have her independence now, but like if she changes her mind, we just wanted to have something available. And also if people stay with us, like visiting and stuff like that, then we'll have a neck, like a, you know, they can have space.
The, the only reason I.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brian.
I'm sorry. The only reason I bring that up is because this, and Jim, you can correct me if this is something that, um, that is allowed under the rules or under the bylaws is that typically, um, it's, this is the plan. This is the person that's moving in. It's, it's an existing current hardship that is required than that we're trying to mitigate. And we're allowing a family-in-law apartment to be allowed where multifamily homes would best, would otherwise not necessarily be allowed. And the risk from the town's point of view, if you want to call it a risk, is that we permit, uh, a family-in-law apartment, but then it's utilized as a second, uh, a rental property, basically. And, um, in the, all of the years that we've, I've been on the board at least, we've never had, it's my memory, uh, an applicant of someday I want to use it for this purpose. As opposed to, we're going to use it for this purpose, like right now, there's a need for it. So Jim, I don't know if I'm making it more complicated than I need to, or?
When I look at the bylaw though, Brian, I think you're right because it does say in the two, it says owner occupancy requirements, the remaining unit must be occupied by a family member. So that I read that as it has to be occupied. Once it's passed, it can't be.
Should I yell out "ask"?
But I'll, I'll let Jim kind of answer that because that's a good question.
Yeah. So I mean, that's the intent of, of the bylaw certainly is to have that for a sufficient need. But, uh, you know, it spells it out for health or financial or otherwise. But, um, you know, and, and this is a somewhat rather unique ask, I guess. But if, you know, if it's identified for a specific individual and they have a, a map and a plan for, you know, the proper care of that location. I mean, I guess, um, there is some risk in terms of enforcement perhaps. But, uh, but you know, I, I think it, it may meet, you know, the merits of the, the bylaw. It's ultimately up to the board, obviously. But, um, you know, if, if it's checking off the boxes of, of the, the bylaw, we could go straight down there. If the only, um, concern here is that, you know, it's not going to be occupied right away, but it sounds like it would be occupied within those, those five years within which this, this permit would be good for. Ultimately, it's up to the board then.
And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I, I, I'm stumbling with this as well because, uh, it's a very easy process for the most part, um, to get a family apartment approved within reason. Um, when the time does come, it could be a very simple process. I, I'm stumbling on approving this without continuing shoes, without someone occupying that space. Um, and is the building inspector on tonight? I'm not sure.
So it's Tim?
Tim. Um, the, in my understanding, I could be totally wrong. What would constitute that family apartment is installing an oven or range, if I'm not mistaken. Having a second refrigerator or a second sink doesn't really constitute a family apartment. Am I incorrect in that some on it?
Um, no. So, um, a lot of houses have two kitchens, you know? Um, there isn't anything saying that you cannot have two kitchens in a house or 10 bathrooms. Um, you know, it just, it can't be rented for supplemental income, you know? Um, it cannot be a two-family.
May I interject something? It's, so I'm, a question, have you had conversations with your mother with, with, with regard to moving in at some point in time?
Yeah.
Would you tell us how that is going so far?
She just acknowledges that we're making the moves to have it available for her. Like she's pretty non-committal about anything to her style. Um.
You have, does she have any? I'm sorry, Art, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
Thank you. But, but she's aware that you're doing this on, on her behalf?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. She's a little hesitant only because, you know, I think she feels like, oh, if I, if I move in with somebody else, it's, you know, it's a sign of like aging or, you know, kind of giving up her own independence. But we're just trying to be proactive for her because I think ultimately the time will come where she, you know, will need to be living with somebody.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if, if it's not occupied, um, will, will, will anybody else occupy it by any chance? Or is it only for her?
No, it'd just be for her.
Okay. It, and does your, does your mom have, um, any existing medical conditions or limitations? Or is she of advanced age or what's her circumstances?
Might as well tell me about the military.
Well, yeah, she just had a couple. She, um, she retired a little early because she had, uh, like a couple of strokes, like a year or something ago, a couple of years ago. So she was detained, like, she was in a, she was running a mission in, um, Wisconsin and ended up staying with the military for about an extra year and a half or two after her strokes, um, to like recover and plus doing the out processes. And I'm not sure if you guys have any veterans, but it's like a quite lengthy, so she, but now that she's back, she, um, she's been living by herself in Attleboro, but, um, she's like, I don't know. There's like, um, instances where she gets frustrated with, you know, having to do stuff by herself, like, like house care and stuff. She has like, she's not as strong as she used to be. And she's had like some limitations with movement from the strokes. So she, she can still get around, but things are like harder to like, she gets like big furniture in or she needs help doing the driveway, things that are like, you know, like annoying for everyone else to do. It's like more, she feels, you know, it's more difficult for her as a older lady with seven head strokes.
Yeah. It, so it strikes me that, yeah, this would be a slam dunk if she, if she was actually had the intention to, to reside at the house. But it could be a year, it could be five days from today or five years, right? Theoretically that, you know, so. So. Um.
So I guess that's kind of the point that Peter's saying too, is that if the process usually is pretty easy for approval, do you, I guess, because I could go either way, I guess, with this. But do you just get it approved now or do you wait for that? That you feel that it is, you know that she's going to be coming in and then go for the approval for the family apartment?
Like I said, just trying to be proactive and get all the ducks in a row in case it is like in a month or six months, you know? It'd be nice to kind of have everything already done, I guess, so we wouldn't have to wait.
So I guess with this one, I guess like Jim is saying, we, it would be obviously, it would designate your mother as the sole occupant. Um, I don't, yeah, because I, I think, because I guess I could see both sides to it, but, but I guess there's enforceability, I guess, like Brian, like you're saying, if it's brought to the attention to the building inspector that it is being rented or it is to someone other than her, then he could, we could, they could, Tim could have them take out the appliances, right? Then it would revert, they would lose the family apartment?
So, uh, do you honestly, I'm having an issue even, why are we even going down that road? Um, it, it's, we, we, we don't have an occupant for this unit as of right now. Um, so I, and I get, I'm going to stay in with, I, I have an issue. I mean, if we had like this, I would have no issues with it whatsoever.
Well, let me, let me, let me just add here. So I'm just going to kind of build a scenario. If I, if, uh, I was young enough that my mom was still alive and she was, had a couple of strokes and, and she was hesitant to move in. Um, and I would say to her, Mom, we got it all set for you. So that make it easier for her to transition into that and to make that decision. I think, you know, as a psychological thing, it's, it's helpful to have, have this all done for, for her mother.
So you like that it, you can see that, um, having it all ready to go for the mother?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially since it's just going to be for her mother anyway, in either case. Whether we do it now or later.
Yeah.
We, we could actually wind up back here five years from now looking for renewal and still not have an occupant.
That's true.
That's not a big deal, is it?
Yeah, I was going to say, is it really a big deal just to have the permit approved? Just to, I mean, if nobody's there, nobody's there. If she's able to move in and she wants to move in, great, it's ready to go.
Well, especially since she does have some health issues.
Because we don't, we don't use the top floor anyways. Um, because when we first bought the house, um, we had a newborn and we also had a dog that was 16 years old with arthritis. So we all stayed on the first floor just to make things easy. Um, so I mean, really it's just kind of sitting vacant right now anyways.
So can I ask a question for Jim? Because I guess, and maybe this would be, I guess, I'm just wondering if following the bylaws, the under family apartments, the 240 dash 74, under section B, number two, it says, the remaining unit must be occupied by a family member of the owner. So I would take that to mean that it would, they would have to be occupied by the time that it's granted, but I don't know.
Well, you can't occupy it until it's granted, right, Brian?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, and maybe this would be a good question for Brian Salisbury, but I just feel like the, my interpretation of it means that it has to be, once it's, it's granted, that it can't be designated for someone. They have to be ready to occupy that unit.
I mean, it's not expressly stated in the, the bylaw. Uh, however, you as the zoning board are the interpreter of the bylaw. So you're, you know, you can certainly, uh, make, make those findings and determinations. Um, but again, I, again, on the flip side, uh, there is nothing, uh, expressly stated that you could identify an individual and that individual would be, uh, prescribed that, that location, uh, over the course of those five years and, and only that person.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, it says word for word, you know, for, um, section C, one dash B, whether there is enforceable assurance that occupancy of the unit will serve significant community purposes such as facilitating care for the elderly. In this case, would you consider it facilitating care for the elderly? It doesn't really state.
That's good.
The, the one above it says the remaining unit must be occupied by a family member. Uh, I feel like if, as long as no one else other than a family member will occupy it, um, it would be, uh, would meet the bylaw and that, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I guess I don't see any, I guess I feel like I'd be in favor. I don't see any detriment to passing it because I feel like at the, the worst case scenario, if it's being rented, then the building inspector, building commissioner could ask them to revert it back and take out the appliances. So it can't be a family apartment. Um, so I guess I don't see a, a negative other than, I guess, if you're, but Brian makes a good point. I've never run into this either. Usually it is ready to go where it is, they're going to be moving in, but.
And the only, I, I'm not trying to be a hard, uh, you know, I want, you know, the family apartments are a great thing. And they, they, they're, um, a service that I think that this board can provide and it helps a lot of families. And I think it's great that people are stepping up and taking care of their family members. But the, so we often get called upon to make these horrible decisions sometimes where there's really no good answers. And the only salvation that I take away from all this and the, the thing that I think the community wants us to do is to give everyone a fair shake, but to, to apply the, not to make special exceptions when something doesn't fall into it. And that's what I personally, I want to do it. But what I'm struggling is, is that if you read section B, it says that it must be occupied by a family person, occupied.
That's what I, yeah.
And if you go down to C5, it says, permanent removal of a person from the permit shall nullify the permit. So there's clearly an intention in the bylaw that the assumption is, is that there's going to be someone living there. And it's not, well, one day, like if I, I could say, you know, my mom's getting older, but maybe someday she might need to live there. Maybe I'll just add this and do it. Does that, you know, and I don't know the answer to this question, but.
Yeah, it's a tough one too, because the unit is already kind of set to go. So you could say they're getting it ready for the mother, but she could go in there. And, and like Tim was saying, it would have a refrigerator. So you could, and then you could, like Peter's saying, you could apply for the family apartment and it usually does get granted pretty quickly, I would imagine, from what I've experienced too. Someone could move in there and be.
And that, that's my point too, is, you know, the, the unit is there. We, we're not talking about a pulling permits and doing a construction project. Um, the unit's there. If it does come a time, 30 days, 60 days that the mother has to move in, it's just a matter of, you know, putting a few appliances in there and applying, uh, for the permit and which is normally granted. I mean, because we do like to do this for people in Bellingham.
But does it say in the bylaws that the family member has to immediately be moving in once the permit is granted? Or is it just say a, a family member has to be the one moving in at some point?
Is Sage occupied?
Yeah, our, um, my experience and like Brian was saying, and I think, um, I guess Art, I could, you know, can't speak for the rest of the board, but it's always is, from my experience, it is designated for a family member and they are moving right into it. So it's never been like a, a preparation for a later date.
Especially when we don't have a, a later date. It's, it's an infinite date. We don't have, you know, we're planning on doing this and the person coming in is going to let their lease or sell their house in, you know, January or October. We don't have that date. We just have sometime maybe.
That's true.
And we want to open it up to the public, Brian, before we, uh, close the meeting.
Yeah, it's a good point. Um, yeah, open it to the public. Uh, if anyone wants, has any comments or thoughts, um, just state your name and address. Anyone out there? Any neighbors?
Motion to close your hearing then.
Second it.
All those in favor?
I asked one question before. I'm sorry. One question for the applicant. Um, in your mind, when, when do you think your mom will have to move in? Not necessarily when she, she's ready for it, but do you, do you think there's a date in your mind that you could say that shit, that's the date? Is she the, like, she's the only one that hasn't really come to the conclusion that she needs to move in? And it's a matter of pride and.
Yeah.
Because that would be helpful if you could give me a date.
Yeah, I feel like she, like there's more and more instances, there's just more and more instances where she just wants help and she's, the people aren't close by to help her. And I think we can like, I don't know.
Within the next 90 days?
It's hard to, hard to guess, I guess, you know, I mean.
Yeah, well, I think if it's, if you anticipate that her, um, it, it would certainly help me if you weren't able to sort of anticipate a date in which you think she would really just sort of practically speaking.
If it was helpful to say within the next six months, you know?
You think that's realistic, six months?
I mean, anything's possible, but I'm, you know, I mean.
She's also, I'm sorry, yeah, to interject, but she also, it sounds like part of the difficulty is that she wants to remain independent so that she is open to the idea at some indeterminate time.
Yeah.
When she feels, which is great that you guys are opening up your house and want to take care of her, but it's kind of, uh, it's an unknown.
Right. And I still, kind of the whole point of adding the in-law suite is that it would still be like her own place, you know? But with somebody right there for her in case, you know, she needs something or something happens.
And this is a special permit, right? So why don't, so why don't we, why don't we condition the approval on, uh, a status review hearing? And if, if that we reconsider the, the extension of the permit, I don't know, after a year? Is that something we can do? Check, check back in in a year and if she's there, great. If not, we have another conversation.
Yeah, you certainly can condition a special permit for that regard.
I would, if the applicant's belief is that within the next six months to a year, that the mother will, will move in and we have a, a status hearing and.
Brian, could, yeah, without approving it, could we actually do a very similar, just do continuance for a set period? So that they don't have to reapply, they could just say, hey, we're, we're ready to come back. Um, mom's ready to move in. Give it a six-month, even a nine-month continuance? And then if in six months it is time, they can just come back and they don't have to go through the whole process of reapplying. It's just continuance?
But they wouldn't be able to do any of the, put in the appliances or anything, of course, right? Until the continuance at that meeting they get.
I mean, I hate to say it, but to drop a small kitchen, refrigerator and an oven is not a major hardship. It's.
Yeah.
But I would, I would suggest that, um, the, the harm that we're trying to protect against is someone using their home to make it a multifamily and a single-family residence. So if, you know, if, if they're, if they're somewhat confident, and I think that they said they were, that six months to a year, they, their mom will be moving in and we condition the permit that, you know, within a year or from a year from now, we check in with them and that we have this conversation at that time. That, I think that works. I think that's, that's within the, what we can do, um, within the bylaw and it also. That, I think that works, I think that's, that's within the, what we can do um within the bylaw, and it also works for this family.
Brian, may I suggest just a condition that they provide confirmation that that she is occupying it within a year? And if, and if not, then we'd have to come back to the board for an extension of time?
That would, that would work for me.
Well, there is a motion on the floor to close the hearing, and seconded is, do we want to call a vote on that, Brian?
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, okay.
Aye.
Um, any other discussion?
No, I, the only thing I would say is I don't want anyone to take away the impression that we're trying to be mean. It's just our job is to follow the rules, you know, and that's really important to this process and the process generally, so it's just it's sometimes it's really hard to 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 make it all work, you know?
So just What was the wording, Brian, uh, Jim, Jim, that you had mentioned? Uh, grant them, grant the uh family unit with a one-year provision to, how did you word that?
Uh, something to the effect of, within one year of the date of this permit, the applicant shall provide evidence of Gloria Bogue occupying the family apartment. Uh, and and without, without evidence, um, the applicant shall uh, um, appear before the the board uh to request an extension.
Or, yeah, secret rule or whatever you want to say. I think that sounds good.
And this is just a special permit, so majority will pass that, correct?
Right, right. Yeah.
Now, I do, uh, four, four out of five.
Just want to make sure.
Special permit, you need cord, Jim?
Yeah, super majority for a special inheritance.
Can we just make sure who voted in affirmative? Will we have anybody that did not? You, okay, we're ready to go then? Okay.
Yeah, I I voted nay.
Well, we didn't vote, we didn't vote yet.
I thought you did vote.
I thought they did too, as well.
Yeah, we wanted to close.
Okay, let's, if we can do a roll call vote and do it everybody like one at a time, so we can get that, that would be great.
Why don't you call us out?
Works for me, yeah.
I I don't want to be a procedural, but no, it's, but I don't think anyone's made that motion either, so, Art, do you want to make that motion?
Motion to grant as specified, uh, as as Jim laid out.
I'll second it.
Okay, and then Amy, do you want to do the roll call?
Okay, Art?
Uh, yay.
Okay, Brian Wright?
Yay.
Brian Salisbury?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yay.
And Peter?
Nay.
Okay. Jason, I wish you could vote, but I don't think Peter, I I don't think Jason can, correct, Jim? Because we have enough? No, okay. So I think it passes four, four out of the five.
To the, to the applicant, we'll we'll draft up the decision. Um, we will let you know when it gets uh signed and and stamped in with the town clerk. There is a twenty-day appeal period, so it it's not, it doesn't go into effect till twenty days, and then Amy will be reaching out to you with uh, a final decision in hand if there's no appeals, and if there isn't a deal, you'll be notified as well.
All right, well, thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll move to the next uh item on the agenda. For three fifty Rentham Street.
Um, Brian, we do have, um, the applicant has requested a continuation to the next meeting, which would be April seventh.
Okay. Is there
Motion to grant continuance?
Just real quick, for procedurally, uh, if we could make a motion to waive the reading of of the hearing.
Okay, motion to waive the reading of the hearing? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now a motion to open the hearing?
So motion open a hearing.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And now a motion to continue.
Motion to grant the continuance on our next meeting.
Which is April seventh, yes.
Second motion.
All those
At seven o'clock, yep, we got it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, continue it to next month. So then I guess the only thing left is just the minutes then.
Those are pretty easy, motion will accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, does anyone need additional time or? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to close?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, that's it.
Just a quick reminder.
And you too, Amy.
Yeah, just a quick reminder, thanks for everybody.